Hello?
Hey, Orion.
All right, I think we're on Melody, you've got everybody here. I think at this point, if everybody's ready to go, let's see, Tracy did, Tracy, you look like you're traveling a little bit. So, that's good, we can, everybody done the mic check already? I guess so, so here we go, Melody, I'm gonna turn it over to you before I call it to order, so if you could just kind of read the statements and I'll call it to order and we'll do a roll call.
Absolutely, thank you Mayor. I just wanted to go over a couple logistics for those participants who may not be very familiar with Zoom. Just as a reminder, your main controls are on the lower left-hand side of your computer screen, these are your audio and video controls. Please make sure to mute yourself when you're not talking and to keep your video on as we are streaming live to YouTube. For board members, the mayor will be calling on each board member individually to provide comments. If you would like to speak at any point during the meeting, please raise your hand. Please be mindful of your background when raising your hand, as you might have to bring your hand forward so that we can see it. Also, if we are in the middle of our presentation and you're raising your hand but are not being called on, please feel free to speak up. Most importantly, we want to make sure that all the board members are able to participate in this meeting fully, so if you experience any technical difficulties, please make sure to text me so that we can suspend the discussion. Next, we need to take the roll call. Please indicate if you're present, Mayor Ronald Pappas.
Present.
Mayor Pro Tem Brenda McMillan.
Present.
Commissioner Anne Simpson.
Present.
Commissioner Tracy Westlock.
Present.
Commissioner Pedro Marie.
Present.
Thank you, all members are present, Mayor, I'll turn the meeting back over to you.
Great, thank you Melody, at this time, we're gonna call it to order, the Board of Commissioners work session. Haven't said that for a while, September 22nd, 2020. And so, it's 4:30 PM, we are getting going, so with this, I'm gonna actually turn it over to Matt on Item Number B, I think it's the Matt Show today, Matt, so you're up for all three, all three pictures.
Very good, thank you Mayor, and every day is Matt Show in my world. Thank you all for coming out this afternoon and listening to me, I'm really excited to present this plan, it's been a long time coming and I really think it's gonna change a lot of the way we do things and for the better. And so, Nick, is Jonathan on the call yet?
I don't see him up yet, yeah, he's just shut up, sorry.
So first, I want to kind of introduce the team that's behind this. Of course, this is my bright idea, so if it doesn't work, I'll take all the blame, but Ryan certainly has been a great part of this, Theo has kind of hit the ground running replacing Kevin, and then Jonathan Whitehurst is with Kim Lee Horn, they're our consultant, and they did most of the heavy lifting last fiscal year. We knew we wanted to do this plan and it just so happened that there was an open call from CRTPO for planning level monies, so we submitted it and were approved at an 80%, 20% local match. And so, we're very fortunate that a lot of this was provided through CRTPO funding, and again, I'm excited of what we've come up with and hope you'll agree, this is the way we should be moving forward. What I want to do, because I think we've already covered a lot of the public input side of things with the two surveys, and the real meat of it is in the report card and in the prioritization piece, I want to focus on that and kind of go into the details and let us look under the hood of how we kind of arrived at these conclusions, to make sure you're all comfortable in understanding where we've come from and where we intend to go with this, and most importantly, make sure you have an opportunity to concur with what direction and if there's any changes we need to make before we bring it forward for adoption, you have the opportunity to respond and give us that direction toward a final draft. So, basically, I want to talk a little bit about the why and then we'll go into the details. In the few years that I've been here, I've seen that all our previous plans and methodologies were really point-in-time oriented. They were rarely acted upon and not related to a functional funding model. The recommendations made were lost in administrative and board transition as well as impractical, made impractical by the rate of private development. So in order to inform a working CIP, we know needs to be on the horizon. These kinds of high-cost, long-planning commitment projects needed a new foundation that identified all potential problem areas, provided relevant background data, and were rated in a way that is objective and consistent. Add to that, the ever-changing state and private development impacts, the plan needed to be as flexible as possible and able to take new information more seamlessly. And do the expense and often interrelated nature of these projects, a means to leverage public and private partnerships will be key to planning for success. And so, this includes the kind of data that we brought forward so that this adopted plan kind of meets the CRTPO's minimum requirement for any funding calls. Finally, I think a need for transparency and accountability to the public for our progress, and sometimes our lack of progress is important so that any changes required can be identified and implemented at the earliest possible point. So that's the kind of the why, and then what we'll get into now, I'll show you kind of the how, again, kind of really focusing in on the technical aspects, so to be sure that we all have a good grasp of what's included. So, the first piece is on page 224, it's the report card piece. I think one of the biggest things to understand with this, as we begin, is that the report card is location-related and it's not project-related. And what it does is it uses our data to rate current performance, identify major planning considerations, and inform partnership implementation with a color-coded, at-a-glance reference. And so again, the locations won't necessarily tie specifically 101 with projects, but again, the projects may come and go, but the locations will always kind of be first and foremost in our daily lives. So this, to me, is the accountability piece of the plan. As the ratings on the consideration side improve, they go from red, yellow, to green, the projects at these locations are in better position to move forward. And as they are completed, the ratings on the performance side will improve. And this is expected to be somewhat cyclical as time passes and improvements become out of date, so again, if we're looking at just the values in the card, when you see red, that means work that needs to be done. And as that work gets done and we update this, it will go from red to yellow, then to green, and then as time goes on and they become outdated, they'll go back to yellow, and that's kind of a warning sign that we need to start planning again, or we're gonna get to red and have to go through the process again, and this is the one more living pieces of it, that we're never gonna be done. It's always just passing it along to the next administration, if you will, and the next funding cycles, the next CIP, to keep this live and active. So in my mind, if we look at this, I would say, from a sustainability standpoint, we would want to update this plan and the report card every two years, say as new board members are brought on in an election cycle, or something similar to that, so that we can update it and maybe get a new MetroQuest survey that also updates the public input piece as changes in public mindset occur. And so if we want to kind of look at this and go behind the curtain, so to speak, we can shift over to the Excel spreadsheet, and it has two different workbook pages. One of them is the input and analysis page, and this is where I think a lot of the more complex decisions are made, and where really the calculations get made that decide what color comes to the forefront in this particular category. So the input and analysis has it all in one piece, then there are also some values tables that kind of break them out between intersections and corridors, and it's a little bit easier to manage, but it's really in my mind the same one and the same data, and certainly Jonathan, if there's anything I'm saying that is not accurate, or you have maybe more detail to add, certainly feel free to chime in.
Sure.
But when we look at this and we look at page 224, that's kind of sets out, how did we make these decisions? And it refers to the mapbooks, it refers to the surveys, it refers to the sources of data that we felt were most up-to-date and effective at giving us a cue, and then certainly being out in the field, driving through town, walking through town, biking through town, all informs kind of the decisions that were made to get to this point. And so again, I think the red, the yellow, and the green are pretty understandable. When we talk about the last column, which is the partnerships, right now, that's just kind of a brown and a gray, the brown being who is the lead agency more or less, and the gray being a secondary participant, so to speak. I think I might change this to maybe a hierarchy, because typically, now we're seeing projects, if there's a TIA involved, and it's a state road, that all three are players in it, and who would be the lead role, and then who plays secondary, tertiary roles, that could come forward as well.
True. Matt?
Yes?
I have a question, so under the partnerships here, as an example, where we just went through with the reserves at Forest Creek, and we're gonna be getting those intersection improvements, would that be an example of partnerships? Or would that, how would that factor into this particular section?
Yeah, absolutely, I think once we get another funding source that we didn't already have come into play, I think that's where we would begin to maybe shade in a private sector on that project to help inform us that, hey, before it was maybe just the town, the state, and the CRTPO, but now we've got another player at the table, and that can raise and lower accordingly where we think this project needs to fall. Again, being flexible with those kinds of changes is gonna be very important to make sure that we're staying current with the conditions on the ground, and again, I see this whole, this is not necessarily reported as much as a source of guidance for all of our planning. Anytime we talk to a developer, or the state, or CRTPO, I think we would want to have this this report in our hands to reference where we stand and what may have changed, and how that informs whatever particular decision we might be involved in.
Matt, if I could add one thing, I think there's a helpful education component to the partnership piece as well. I mean, if you just look at that at a glance, one of the things that you can take away from that is that the region and the state, so in ZDOT and the MPO, have a lot of control over decisions that are being made on the facilities in the town that are probably being talked about the most. And so I think, you know, we talk about the master transportation plan as a tool for staff, it's also an education tool that we want to use in the community as well.
Great, I guess just sort of my thought process was if we kind of partner and work on win-win solutions with builders and things like that, that we might be able to work together to get some of these improvements, and especially where funding sources and things are so difficult right now. And you know, I think that last project, we're receiving close to what, a million dollars worth of improvements for some of these traffic and mitigating these impacts.
Correct, yeah, and we'll be keen, I think that's the model now and going forward, to ensure that we can deliver what we know needs to happen in as flexible and kind of all-encompassing way as possible.
And if I could, I'm sorry, if I could add to that real quick, Anne, this is on the zoning side of this, when a plan like this gets adopted, and we're writing our new land development code now, one of the things that the board will see when we start to work our way through it is in the first chapter, how it'll be tied to the plans that we have adopted, whether they're transportation plans, whether they're comprehensive pedestrian plans, so it'll specifically say in that document, where we have some plans in place, we will have the ability to utilize that and help to try to work our way towards getting at a minimum, some money, i.e. payment lieu towards a project, depending on what size and what level a project it is, or be able to get it done by the developer in some way, shape, or form, so you have a lot of flexibility in there as well.
And to Matt's point as well, I mean, this, our ability to do public-private is going to basically give us one extra bucket of funds to be able to draw from on any given site project or whatever.
Yeah, that's all, that's all good information. So is there anything in the report card that you want to get into deeper detail on? Did it make sense to everyone what we're trying to do, and did that come across and be accomplished through this? Okay? So then, the other piece...
I'm sorry, she's muted.
Yeah. Is Tracy trying to? Oh, okay.
No, I'm good, I'm just, I'm sitting here worried about my batteries. It's like about going out, I may have to switch to my laptop here, that's all.
Okay. All right, so the next piece is the mapbook, and that basically is installed as part of the report, and it's intended to be a compendium of all the data that we are able to capture spatially. Most of these pages are already regularly updated, they're a part of what information we already keep track of and have their own lifecycle, so it's not something we have to specifically add on as work to continue to update as a part of this. Some of these are still works in progress as they kind of came up through this format. I think I'm gonna also, in addition to kind of the data on power bill, the land use, I'm gonna add the pavement conditions map, just so people can see where we make decisions when I put out contracts for maintenance work. I think that's also helpful to be transparent through. Most of these are generally self-explanatory. The TIA data is one map that I think was really, we're just at the tip of the iceberg, I think I really see an ability to take the TIAs, which are whether the projects move forward or not, it's really good analysis data and forecasting data that helps us understand potential problems before we're even aware of them that come out of this, and I think a next, maybe iteration of this report will have a much larger component of taking that data and really bringing it to life for us, but it really, in the time and the funds we had, we weren't able to really delve too deep into that, that's kind of a to-be-continued. And then finally, the CTP pieces, that's our current data, and it's kind of, it's a lot to take in. I think the next piece for us, we'll want to review this and update it to make sure it's communicating to the CRTPO what it is we're key on, and not just really this one, it says everything needs improvement and everything needs to be recommended, but it doesn't necessarily help with decision-making, and so I would say of the mapbook pieces, this one is probably due for an update as well. Are there any questions to the information provided through the mapbook? We're great. So now we get to, I think, what is the most important portion of the plan, and that's the prioritization section. So that begins on page 37, in my mind, with the general list of projects, and so this is really just a first flush in no particular order of projects that were for consideration from all our input sources. Our own internal administrative, from the public's input, and from previous plans, this is kind of the master list, if you will, and it's not so big as to be unmanageable, and it's not too small as to be too narrow, I think it's a good representation and a good starting point. Then if you move to page 39, you get to the criteria section, and this starts to get a little bit more involved in how we categorize, describe, and add a weighted factor to our qualitative and quantitative factors when we want to compare these projects against one another.
Matt?
Yes?
I have a question on this, so I know back on 37, it has a list of intersections or crossings here. And part of this, the prioritization criteria, is there anything in that says, I know we have all these intersections, but is there a list that says that these would be too cost prohibitive? I guess, I guess that doesn't matter, I'm sorry, I'm answering my own question. I guess the point that I was trying to make is that if we identified an intersection, would something be identified that we would definitely need outside funding sources versus something that we could finance internally?
Yeah, I think if we get a little deeper into the prioritization, you'll see that some projects clearly are not specifically able to be taken down by the town, and that's really a lot of projects, but in terms of our own planning, this helps to identify those as well, and so we can make decisions with that in mind, but understanding we would want to spend resources of our own now to implement them in a team, say with DOT, or with a developer, or through some other funding format, because of where they fall in the prioritization and where the board and the administration think our value is across these varied projects, and so I think that'll be a little clearer a little bit later on. So really, that comes to the next page, page 310. Once you start inputting all the data that we kind of run through the criteria, we come to the results, and again, the report is not necessarily going to show behind the scenes how we got to this scoring, but we will do that today because we want to be sure everybody is on board and likes the direction that it's showing. But basically, what this has done is that we've input all the data, it's crunched the numbers and returned back say, two different tiers of projects, the top scoring, and if you just split them in half more or less, you have the top scoring projects on the first tier, and then the lower performing projects on the second tier. So one of the things I think right off the bat that we did notice, I think in general, these scores are in alignment, I think, with with my own logic, with the team's logic, and where we thought these might fall, and for us, that supported that I think we were in the right direction, with how we made decisions on providing scores and the weighting. What is clear is when you look at the bottom of Tier 2, you got your sidewalks and your greenway projects are sitting down there, and what that tells me is we didn't do a great job of being able to make an apples-apples comparison of roadway projects with sidewalk and greenway projects, and that's understandable. You can have a roadway project that provides bike and ped, but you don't necessarily have a sidewalk project that provides roadway improvements, so you're not gonna see any values return well in the traffic side of things and potentially in safety side of things. And so what this is telling me right now is, is maybe we should manage the bike and the greenway projects, the bike-ped projects separately through the updated Parks and Rec Master Plan and through our update of our ped plan, which is, which we also have a grant to do this fiscal year. And then we can take those results, put them back into this report to make sure they don't get lost in the shuffle, kind of somewhat artificially, but continue to decide how we want to fund all these things in parallel. If it's a percentage of the overall funds we have available to keep them working as well, that can be, that can be kind of brought forward when those decisions, it's time for them to be made. So if we look kind of behind the curtain and go to the spreadsheet, the first part of the spreadsheet that I think is most important is the assumptions. It kind of lays the groundwork for how did we make a determination if a project has so many different aspects to provide a number value, and then the weighting values, in addition to be able to compare them as objectively as possible. And so this is where you would first go, if you look and you don't understand why one project or one score is different from another, you would start here to see what were the assumptions that we made, and then that returns a value. And if that's in line, again, we want this to be able to be streamlined going forward to the future from now until really the end of time, so that different administrations, different engineers can take this and pick it up and not have a change in consistency, not have a change in how this is being updated and moved forward through other fiscal years, through different CIP cycles. So this is the kind of the, the more specific, uh, decision points. And then if you go to say the input and analysis page, this is where those values are input, where the weightings, the raw scores are then weighted. Uh, and it's all calculated on this sheet. So you can kind of really see, um, how everything in each input category compared to one another. And then finally that gets turned into the actual report, um, sheet that just returns the, uh, the numbers in, in the tiered format and doesn't try and, and go to, um, two nuts and bolts to, to, uh, to confuse the issues. And that's what we would see in the report if, if that's all we were looking at. And so what these do is then we, we took the, the scored and we turned them into a, a map as well. And so we have map six A, which is just all the projects, uh, with no, with no, just kind of geographically shown, but no values applied to them. And then what I will call six B, more or less becomes the one that's prioritized into the tiers. And what it begins to show is the projects in tier one, where they are and, and that they would be kind of our first round of, of improvements proposed. And then the, the blacked out or the darker tiers are ones that we know need to be done, but they're not as high up on, on any of the needs categories to, to really consider right now, but, but they are out in the, in the discussion because if some project came along in that, in that area, maybe that changes the conversation. Um, what I do think this does is, is, is pairs well with the already funded projects. So we do have in the map book and already existing funded projects. And if we think about NC 16 already being programmed for widening, uh, what this does, this matches quite nicely to show in addition to the widening, where the widening stops, our plan picks up and says, okay, we've got to from the parkway solve problems in, in the, in the directions, east and west with the parkway and also to the south for Broome Street to make sure that we don't create more problems than we solve when that widening comes and then doesn't have anywhere to put all those volumes that have been dumped there. And so, uh, again, I think I like a lot about what we've done here in terms of it being able to put everything in one place and then give us a lot of data and information to talk, uh, pretty well informed about it, both from the town standpoint, from the public standpoint, from DOTs, private developers, um, all of those, all of those various things that, that a lot of point in time reports can't really address once they're done. I mean, you know, to, to put it, it took us about a year, uh, to get to this point. And, and in that time, a lot of things have changed already. And, and if we were doing this, I, I'd already be out of date if this was a point in time kind of study. Um, and so that's what I'm trying to avoid and, and make something that we can, uh, use on a regular basis. Hopefully this comes to every, every big meeting that involves something transportation related so that we are, we're keeping it fresh and in, in front of us and are able to, uh, to make decisions in real time that are, that are informed here. With that, I kind of, I get to shut up and you guys can, can really delve into what, what you like, what you don't like and, um, and let us know what we can do prior to bringing this forward to, to adoption. I will say that the fourth chapter is on funding and, and it's a, it's a good informational piece. But I think we're already aware because we've been going through the motions so much with CRTPO, with DOT and with, uh, developers that we kind of know what's, what's in our box. I think the biggest thing is as we really started to take these down and consider the kinds of projects involved, um, funding additional beyond where we're currently programmed is, is definitely going to be required and, and we'll want to make well-informed decisions as to what projects would want to go into a, a funding model that, uh, that you guys all feel is appropriate. So with that, I'll kind of open it up, open up the floor. Jonathan, is there anything that maybe you would want to make sure we touched on as well? I know you guys did a lot of hard work and I don't want to skip over anything you think is, is, is relevant for the board at this time?
No, um, I, I think that's a, a really good summary, um, not to take a step back, but, um, one of the things that we did do was to, to build the map book before we built the, the report card. So all the information from the map book, um, or the relevant information made its way into, um, the report card. That's, you know, some of the numbers, um, behind the scenes. There, there's not a lot of communities out there that have this kind of local prioritization. And so, um, I think that's a really important, um, kind of note to make. And, and I think that as Matt said at the beginning, that is going to be, uh, really helpful, really transformative, kind of going ahead as you're having conversations at the regional level with your, your peer communities. Um, one thing that we know is CRTPO is a large and diverse, um, MPO. And so anything that, that local communities can do to kind of set their projects apart is, is going to do nothing but good.
Thanks, Jonathan.
Matt, I have some questions. So on, if we go back to page three dash 10, one of the projects here I see is Waxar Marvin at Bonds Grove Church Road. Now I know that that's, um, that's not really within our jurisdiction though, although I do know it's a, it's a traffic point and eventually to be rectified, but.
And, and that's a good point. Um, that one, because it's part of the CIA, that's on here as a, as a, as a project because they are going to move forward with, with CRTPO DA funding for that. Um, and, and it is part of our area of, of influence, so to speak. When we defined our, our project area, we didn't necessarily do it across municipal boundaries. We did it in terms of thinking about our, our commuting patterns. And so that's certainly an area where, where our residents would be concerned about and, and we wouldn't want to, um, necessarily dismiss it offhand. But again, I don't know that we would want to lead the charge in any way. And, and to that end, yeah, it's really being undertaken by the county and we'd certainly support what's going on there, but we wouldn't take a lead role.
And I don't know if maybe you can ask, uh, answer this. And I think maybe Jonathan touched on it a little bit. Is how does having this fit into like when the county does their traffic analysis or, or in terms of we needed to get funding through the county or through the state by having this in place? I mean, how does this fit into those pieces too?
Yeah. So the county doesn't necessarily have a model like the CRTPO does where there are lots of, um, really discreet, um, information and, and steps that you have to take. Uh, but I think what this will do is, is we'll work with Bjorn, who is the, the transportation planner out there with what this is doing. And, and then he'll be aware of it and can kind of, uh, help us understand where the county is coming from, see where we're going and make sure that, that we're in lockstep. Um, and so I see this as being a really good tool to that end. And maybe they will start to kind of latch onto this and see that it's as helpful in, in dealing with all their other localities. Not, again, they wouldn't necessarily have as complicated a, a system as we would, but something to that effect might be helpful when, when, when they try to do the similar thing that we're doing, but they have to kind of justify countywide. And we're kind of mostly concerned with, with our neck of the woods.
Well, I know they did have their, um, they did a survey for traffic and things like that to the citizens of Union County. And I just didn't know if this would get factored into, to, to their, um, analysis too, at the county level. I, I would, I would understand why it wouldn't be if.
Right. And I think. Yeah, I think Bjorn would go ahead and look at this and say, hey, I'm doing, I'm thinking of doing this thing over here, whether it's volumes or whatnot. And that could help. Do you guys want to, we, we've got pretty good lines of communication. And I think having this information and it being so concise and thorough will, will only benefit, um, those relationships going forward and help us kind of, uh, do all of our planning in concert.
Matt, have you shared any of this information with them yet?
Uh, I didn't. I wanted to get your input first, but I think that's the next step is to, is to put it out to the county, um, and then to the CRTPO as well and, and see, um, where we can find tuning to, to best suit all of these needs, um, and prior to, prior to bringing it forward for adoption.
Yeah, I would believe that early enrollment is going to be key to this as well. They've got, you know, we don't want to run like silos like we have in the past with them. So, you know, both the CRTPO and the county, uh, should get copies of this. Now we should, uh, likely meet with each one of them as we go forward with this thing, at least get their initial input like they have been doing, at least the county has been doing with the town manager myself is involving us when they have a project that is within our scope or jurisdiction.
Right. And they're aware, they've been, they've been a, a quasi-partner in this. Initially, the first public, uh, survey we did was through the county because they had the license for Metro Quest. And, um, we, we went ahead and, and were able to make use of that the first time around. Uh, and then when, when COVID kind of snuck in and we had to do virtual, we, uh, we were able to use, uh, Kimley Horn's, uh, version because they released the license requirements on that, um, to facilitate kind of virtual, uh, public input. And so they, yeah, they've been, they've been part of the process and CRTPO clearly has been every step of the way with us. And like I said, we would present this prior to, to group, to adopting it to make sure we didn't miss anything, uh, vital in, in, you know, in your terms in, in a silo.
How much of this information are we going to, or should we be able to present at the public input sessions next week?
Uh, I'll, I'll be on hand and, and basically I'll probably just focus on the, the prioritization piece. Uh, I can, I can have it all available, but I think what I would want to do is, is be able to speak to residents' concerns in, in that format to show, um, where, where our current line of thinking is. And, and I'll have a comment box there as well because we're always open to, to, to the public's ideas and, and don't think we're the only ones that can think of these things. Uh, and so that's a key piece, but yeah, we absolutely are planning to be on hand with this, uh, to be able to respond because this is got to go hand in hand with our, with our future land use and our zoning, um, expectations to, uh, to be most productive and successful.
It will be a busy couple of days. It will definitely be a four hour session, I'm sure.
I have no doubt.
You know, Matt, one, one of the, the interesting things is, is when you see something and you look at it over and over again, you, and then you look at it, um, through a different lens, you see something that, that could be added, um, to, to make it that much better. Um, the, the one map, the last map that's right after, um, this page that we have up, I think one of the things that would be really helpful is if we add the funded projects to this so that when folks see this map, they say, okay, we see that 16 is taken care of. That wasn't an omission. And so I think if, if we add that particularly before, um, the public starts to consume this information, it'll go a long way to, um, kind of painting a, a better picture of the overall situation.
Right. And I think, I think the online version, uh, will probably be a little bit more savvy at doing that where you can turn all layers and turn off layers and kind of let the information. But when, when you're trying to do that with a, with a static map, um, there's a fine line between too much information and just the right amount. But I think there's a way we can certainly pull that off. Uh, so it, it, it does speak to that, what's already going on and not confusing, leaving parts out that, that people would kind of jump at and say, well, you're missing a whole lot of, of work here. And, and that's because it's already funded. Good point.
Something that, that I would like to say, you know, we have tier one and tier two and, and some of the things that I see on tier two, I think would certainly be doable from a county perspective. If we had to go at it alone, I, I'd like to see something in sort of these prioritizations, sort of like something that we're going to really need to partner or have something with deeper pockets than what we could do. Cause I mean, there's some things here that, you know, maybe we get a grant up for a sidewalk, but maybe we can do something that sooner rather than later because we, we can, it's, we can afford it or it's more cost effective. And some things, you know, we know, we would never be able to afford or fix 16. So I don't know if there's a way to stratify some of that versus things that we could potentially do on our own or on our own plus or.
No, and I think really where, where that comes into play is, is when we, we start to get into the CIP discussions. We're, we're not just looking at how do these things compare in a, you know, score basis, but how we take them off the page and, and put them into a, a budget bucket. Um, and so there's going to be things like when we talk about the Parkway Extension East, and that's a $30 million project and it, to be completed goes outside into the county. That's certainly one, we're not going to be able to bring it down in and of ourselves, but we also know it's important enough that we've got to start putting pieces in place and we've got to start sounding the alarms and, and getting the other entities involved, uh, earlier rather than later, so that it's not 2050 when it should have been 2030, 2035. Uh, and then as we're able to start taking down, you know, does that mean we, we go to a bond, which is, is perfectly feasible, but it requires a, a lot of legwork on the front end. Um, that's where those kinds of things, those kinds of decisions aren't, um, kind of, let's go ahead and do it. It's, there's a, a long process that needs to be in place and it needs to be the resources in terms of manpower and, and the message need to, and the expectations need to be set and then followed through on a much longer period of time where if we're talking about, say a, a small sidewalk project, yeah, we can probably, even if it's not a CIP per se, we can be thinking about this. And if, if, if the board is, is of the consensus that it's worth it to, to pull it out of a tier two for, for whatever reason, uh, I, I wouldn't have any problems doing that. This is just a starting point. This is not the ending point.
Yep. And, and I think the, the pedestrian plan that, that you all have on the horizon, um, I wouldn't be surprised if that doesn't identify more of those smaller scale projects. And so, you know, this list of projects that, that you prioritize a year from now likely will look a little bit different than, than what you're seeing kind of at this, this first go at it.
And, and what I could foresee as Matt said, as we're talking about capital improvement planning, what I can foresee then is, is these prioritized projects. Now we put our best estimate together at the time, as Matt said, with, uh, like Waxaw Parkway East, that's 30 million. Well, you know, we take our estimate for Howie Mine sidewalk and we'd have all those with all of these projects. And then we can make a, an informed decision whether or not we can try to take down some of these projects, uh, just ourselves on the local level, you know, based on what the cost estimate, uh, is.
And we're also going to have to consider any connections, relationships that we're going to have to have with CSX as well. There's some cornerstone slots. I'm going to leave that up to Matt.
I've never heard of that organization.
They haven't.
Every time I talk to them, I come away dumber for it.
All right. It's still yours. Any other questions? Matt, you can, uh, continue to lead and ask the questions or if there's any fielding of any questions. I'll let you stay in there.
Okay. Yeah, no, um, I think that was kind of the, the main points I wanted to touch on and bring up and make sure that, that you were all comfortable with. Um, again, as you get a little deeper in, certainly we're able to take, um, more, more questions or, or, you know, this is, like I said, it's a living document. Even when it's adopted, we're always going to be tweaking it, adding new information behind it and, and again, making discussions live, uh, from it. So we just want to make sure we were, we're starting off on the foundation that, that we think is, is, is solid, uh, and be able to build from there. I think, I can't not say this, but my only final question is, are we down with MTP? Orion, Theo, oh, they, they were muted. I didn't tell them to unmute. Damn. That's a, that's an aging reference.
It's a good one though.
Right? Matt, I had a quick question.
Yes?
A couple of slides ago, one of the, a couple of columns were a bikeability and walkability. Could you just maybe go into that a little bit? And i- is there a, a sense from the state or CRTPO that that's something that they're factoring in as, uh, I don't want to say given, but, uh, maybe a high tier goal for them to include those two facets to a project?
Right. So I think, I think that's on the assumption, assumptions page, or is that from the report card? Or are they in both? Report card.
Yeah, the, the, the assumptions goes into kind of how we approach walkability and, and bikeability in a little bit more detail. This is one where if the project was a corridor or an intersection. We approached it a little bit different than the crosswalks, the sidewalks and the greenways. And, and the reason being is we wanted to make sure that, that the walkability and the bikeability scores for those projects that are exclusively focused. On those two topics, walkability and bikeability score higher. And so that's how, that's why you see, um, you know, from a walkability standpoint. Crosswalks, sidewalks, greenways, they're all going to kind of achieve what, what we're trying to achieve. With bikeability, we still, um, give greenways the highest score. We pulled it back a little bit for crosswalks and sidewalks. I mean, you, you typically don't think of a crosswalk as enhancing, um, bikeability. But when you think about bikeability and, and kind of, um, ensuring that, that the town streets are, are bikeable. For, for people of all abilities and, and comfort levels on the street. Some of those people are going to be on the sidewalk and using the crosswalks to get across those streets. For the, the corridors and, and intersections for both walkability and bikeability, it gets a little bit more, um, complicated. We, we actually did a, a spatial analysis in GIS. That factored in to, you know, things such as proximity to, um, different destinations that would draw bicyclists or walkers in the town. And then depending upon what portion of the project, um, landed within those buffer areas, they scored, um, a little bit higher. The, the other answer to your question, I think one, one of the nice trends that we've seen. Over the last several years is NC DOT expressing a little bit more willingness to account for bikeability. And walkability for, for some of these corridor projects. That said, things like your pedestrian plan are going to be a, a, a critical input. Into pointing out to NC DOT that that's a priority for a specific location. And so, um, you know, that, that pedestrian plan can't come soon enough for, for those, for, for those types of conversations.
And I think additionally to, to that second question. DOT is, is continuing to bring forward the complete streets. Philosophy where we shouldn't be focusing all these, these funds primarily on vehicular. But for quality of life reasons, we want the bikeability and the, and the, the walkability pieces as well. They, they've proven that, you know, kind of if you build it, they will come. So even if it's, that facility wasn't necessarily intended for these kinds of uses. We know everybody has a better quality of life if we provide them. Uh, and CRTPO is very. I, I guess, um, engaged in that because they do have their own bicycle and pedestrian groups. That, that focus primarily on that, that goal. So that's something I think is, is very key. I, I would love to see, uh, much larger initiatives in those ways. Because I think that's what the residents and our quality of life really provides. I think we find when, when we add more lineage, we just get more traffic. That's what happens. People find the extra lanes and they use it. But if we provide these other modes, our, our quality of life. Just, just shoots up. Everybody's happier. I mean, the results are, are tangible, they're quantifiable everywhere. These kinds of things go into place. People are living longer, they're feeling better, the costs, uh, they're actually, the traffic reduces in a lot of ways because they have other means. And they reduce their trips from jumping in a car every time to taking a walker or getting on the bike. And, uh, and I think that's hand in hand with what I would want to see in Waxaw more than just additional lanes full of cars.
Gee, you mean we're creating a community of lifestyle?
Absolutely.
All right, Matt, still yours.
Yeah, um, I, I think i- if, if, if we've kind of are all comfortable with this. I'm, uh, I'm happy to kind of take it here, um, take it to the county, take it to the CRTPO. See what they say and then bring the, the final, take it from this draft form to the, to the final report. And bring it forward in a future, uh, public meeting for, for a formal adoption.
Yeah. Any other questions by the commissioners or anybody else want to comment? Cause I think this is a great start. It will be a living document, no doubt. And we're going to continue to adjust it, uh, literally, uh, a document that, uh, could survive all of us as well as far as our ten years. So that's a great start, Matt. I think it's, uh, it's a lot of work obviously beforehand, but, uh. I think as you opened up and talking about things that were real and things that weren't, we're, we're starting to get some real focus here. And I, I really do appreciate you and all your team doing that. That's, uh, this is what we've needed for a long time.
Agreed, agreed. And, uh, and I do again, want to thank Kimmy Horn and, uh, and my staff. Because we, we've, it's, it, when we got approved, it took six months for DOT to actually authorize it. And so that took us down from a year to do it to six months because it had to be done in the fiscal year. And that didn't do us any favors. Then I think we had, what a tornado during one of the. That, that cut off one of the public meetings. We had the snowstorm at the next rescheduled one. That we just powered through and then of course COVID has come in. So we've had a lot of fits and starts, but this has been a labor of, of love for me. And, and I think the deeper I got into it, the more, uh, I guess the happier I was with the direction and the, and the, the format that it turned into. Because at the beginning, it was just an idea that we didn't need, we needed to do something and it needed to be different. But we didn't necessarily know what that would be and, and Jonathan, uh, knew exactly, I think, from my, my rough sketching. He was able to focus it and turn it into, into this document that I think I expect will probably, uh, be kind of taken as the. Maybe a new normal for these kinds of things instead of, like I said, the point in times that kind of are, are out of date before even, um, the ink dries.
Matt, I just kind of want to echo what Mayor Pappa said, you know, I want to thank you and the, the staff as well as Jonathan and Kimberly Horn for doing this. And the publics who attended the public input sessions. I think I went to one during the middle of a hurricane and, you know. It was really good to be able to provide that and see it kind of come to life in this document. So you guys did a great job. Thank you.
Thank you all.
Yeah, it, it's funny. You, you can prepare for a lot of things in a planning process, but a tornado in February is not one that you, uh. You typically have on your radar.
Right. Yeah. Well, we'll add that to the list next time.
Fair enough.
Mayor for attend, did I see your hand up? No, she's clapping. Awesome. Any other questions?
All right. I will consider us down with MTP.
Down with that part. Good job.
Yeah, you know me. Thank you. There it is. Appreciate everybody.
All right. So if we've, uh, we've explored that one a lot, let's, uh, Matt, you can take it again. You're, you're up again for the second at bat.
Yes, very good. And so this one is just a very, uh, short informational piece. I think it's just a follow up to the NC sixteen and seventy-five alternatives discussion that we had previously. When our SNH came in and talked about alternatives there. We've, you know, we were pretty sure between us all that we weren't going to be able to do a lane shift that provided, uh, relief. Uh, that saved the parking downtown in terms of, uh, expanding a right turn lane closer to the tracks. CSX has provided us with their, their ruling documentation that says they will not approve. Uh, any parallel facilities that encroach further into their rights of way, just as a rule. So, um, that kind of puts any speculation in that regard, uh, to rest and helps us focus. On, um, what our options are available to us and the decisions that we'd have to make going forward. So, uh, that's, that's really that piece in a nutshell. Are there, are there any questions on that? Very good. And so with that, uh, I think we, we get to stop here for me and, and bring up Orion.
Here I am. Let me get my video. So you see the presentation?
Yes.
All right. Well, thank, thank you all for having me here with you today. Evan helped throw this presentation together before he left for the summer, for the school year. And I was put before me last week to present to you guys. Basically there was the conversation about putting the sidewalk. Before the, before the bridge or under the bridge. And there's a, some issues with that. With the ADA requirements, they require an eighty inch clearance between the structure and sidewalk. So we would need to remove the garden and dig it deeper. Um, this would intrude into the structural. Part of the historic bridge. Um, as you can see on this, there's existing five foot six. And we'd have to, it has to, a sidewalk would have to be four feet wide. And then the, the existing garden is only a foot three, so we would have to go deeper than the bottom of the, the bar. Or the, the wood that we have there currently in the box. Modifying the foundation of this historic structure within CSX right away is prohibited in cost and time. Also looking at it, uh, this is a foundational problem here. And then the second slide, no potential to dig any deeper here. You can see how close we are to the slope. Um, and then you must include also the thickness of the sidewalk. Um, again, digging deeper significantly, uh, inhibits the, the foundation. I'm looking at it from the east side. Of course, we have the, the same issues, um, but a couple more issues to address is. Uh, there's, there's really about the five foot clearance still. Additional grading would have to be done in order to get it back to grade. So if we came down another two, three feet to get. To get the eighty inches that are needed, then we'd have to either put a retaining wall on the, on the south side. Or have significant grading to get back to the roadway elevation. Plan to build the sidewalk under the bridge requires a CSX and, and historical approval from the National Park Services. So that's another issue is we're, we'd like to get this sidewalk built from the bridge. To the mill, you know, started by the end of the year, depending on when we actually get. CSX to, um, negotiate that right away. Um, adding this additional step in there, getting structural design plans would be another. Step that would be, would very much inhibit their, promote the, uh, the construction of this. An alternate plan that could be done would be to move the steps a little bit south. Uh, this would create additional space near the road, um, requires less foundational, uh, impact. But it still would require the historic approval and the CSX approval.
So how are we going to protect pedestrians when they round after they descend the stairs and go do a U-turn there? What are we looking at as far as protecting pedestrians from the street traffic?
The, there's an existing lane here. I, can you guys see my arrow?
Yes, we can.
As, as I move it. So basically this, the line on the edge of the road, there's also the, the, the turn lane starts to widen about right here. So the curb can be pushed out a little bit further from here. Or would be pushed out a little from here. So we would have moving, removing this flower box. We'd have about four feet, it appears to be here, and then an additional push out the curb. So one, we would have a curb. And the sidewalk would be at least four feet wide, possibly more. And then here we're going to put the reflective, uh, repetitive flashing beacon. So this is going to be definitely a, a location where drivers are going to see that this is a crosswalk. And the, the sidewalk and the curb will protect anybody walking by there. So.
Could we, in the design, can we look at incorporating some type of barrier there? And, you know, on the street edge, because I got to tell you, even when I'm walking through there now, I mean, you know, a car can come and get you for one, coming from the mill area. And then if you misstep, uh, you could easily fall into the traffic lane as, uh, as some have done already.
Yeah, that's, I, I, that's definitely something we could look into is providing.
Yeah, it could be, you know, something decorative type barrier kind of thing. So I'm just looking from a safety standpoint. It's awfully close to the travel lane.
That would, I would, I, I would assume that Matt, you want to step in, but I would assume that that would have to be approved by DOT as well. Some, we'd have to meet their requirements for that type of barrier. We couldn't just put up some fancy wood or whatever we wanted to put up. It would have to be something that they approved of.
Yeah, I think, um, the biggest thing, anything like that, a guard rail of any type is going to take up space. That currently we need for the gutter and the sidewalk itself. I mean, the, basically the only time there's going to be any potential. Is, is when someone's actually using that space. And it's really just a, uh, the, the space that gets you from one side of the, the pad bridge to the other. There's a landing at the bottom of the stairs. There won't be those bushes. There won't be the roses there. There will be the, the flashing beacons that highlight when someone presses the button that they want to cross, the cars are going to be alerted. To slow down and if they're not just coming around blind. I'm not aware that in the conditions that it is, it's, it's certainly scary, but I'm not aware that we've had any issues. I would have liked to already have had the improvements in place by now. But, um, for, for my point of view, what we're going to have is, is, is a hundred times better than what's there now. Uh, again, in order to do anything different, the, 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 the real estate between this bridge and the other side of the. The, the buildings on the other side is a set distance and there's only so much we can fit in there. So anytime we add something that's not already accounted for, it's going to take up space we don't have and we just have to make that decision. While at the same time with the OT, with, with the board and, and what's more important. Um, and so if we, if we want to continue to, to look at this spot, I would say right now, I just want to get something in place. Because ultimately when we look at, say, the sixteen, uh, and seventy-five intersection improvement. That might open up new abilities to, to change all the configurations here. And give it on a timeline and with a budget that, that meets that, that greater goal, let's say. But right now, uh, we, we've already got our work cut out for us. And I would say if, if it's in place and we don't like what's going on there, then, then certainly we would go ahead. And, and, and start thinking on interim solutions. But, um, right now I, I don't, I don't have as big a concern with that. We, we've, we've got these kinds of locations, not only throughout town, but throughout the state. And, and typically nothing is, is, is provided in that regard, but that's not to say that it, it shouldn't or couldn't be done.
I brought up the, um, I think I brought up the screen on Google. Can you see that? On, on the screen now. So this is the, the width of the lane that there's an existing turn lane starts here, which is nonsensical. Why are we starting to turn lane way back here where the, where people are trying to wa- walk across the street? So the existing transition for the turn lane would best begin after the crosswalk. And with that, we would be able to widen this a little bit. As Matt said, we'd have the curb and gutter would still need to be here, but it does allow for. A couple more feet where they would allow more than just this little space here to walk.
I mean, I, I, I would like to just sort of echo off of what the mayor said. I, I think that we need to either be able to encroach more on the street because if you come down and around the corner. Uh, I mean, think about it, you're thinking of it in terms of just a few people walking there, but let's say we're having a festival or we're having an event. Or a parade or something and people coming down and they're walking more than two people abreast on the sidewalk. They're going to start walking out on the street in that little area to kind of cross. Or if, or if people are walking over to the mill area or down and around the corner, I just think there needs to be some other protection besides. Especially where it's so narrow, just, just a curb, some sort of barrier or something to protect them. I, I just, but it has to be decorative.
Right. And so, so DOT is going to look at that and say, that's something that, uh, potentially if, 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 if a car, it becomes. If it's not substantial enough, it becomes more of a hazard to the cars and it does safety. For the, for the pedestrians. And, and again, this is not an area that, that if, if I'm, if I'm walking it, I'm not going to want to loiter there, right? You're just trying to get from one spot to the other, from one side of the bridge to the other. Um, and, and, and that's not a place to loiter. But, um, again, cars are going to have the flashing beacon warning. And. When they come to that point, I mean, again, historically, if there were a lot of crashes, injuries in that, then we, we take a, a different perspective. But we're not having any of that data. What we're seeing is, is this is just non-standard and we're trying to get something standard and ADA compliant. So, you know, we, we've looked at the distances and we're squeezing in as much as we possibly can while still providing the vehicular and ped expectations to the minimum, to the minimum requirements. Again, the, the turn lane taper, it doesn't make sense to me to have the taper extend past the crosswalk. So we can, we can make use of that. DOT, in their mind, they would like to have more storage for right turns. But I don't mind not having that storage because you've got a write-on red there and they can pretty much free themselves from, from backing up once, once they're able to get to that spot. Again, I think the bigger, the bigger fix here is what we do with the, the next plan for 16 and 75 and how the vehicular improvements and the pedestrian improvements should be in their final stage.
Matt, is there a way, like at the bottom of that, and I don't know what they call them, when they do like the traffic calming and they make kind of that rounded bump out to kind of make the traffic kind of squeeze into a single lane there? Could, could that be like encroached a little bit more so it's so better pedestrian? Do you know what I kind of mean?
Yeah, I mean, in general, we always want to make the crosswalk as, as narrow as possible so that your travel times across it are, are as short as possible and, and don't subject pedestrians from not being able to get across in a timely manner. I think here, a bump out, again, we've only got so much real estate, so it, it infringes almost immediately on the ability to get cars. And when we're talking about coming out of curves and different sized vehicles, I, I don't know that DOT's, again, they had an ability to, to add anything they wanted when they looked at this plan. They didn't see a cause to add anything in that regard. I think they were more concerned with, with volume and getting the cars through and, and not, didn't see a need to, to enhance the pedestrian side. If, if we were to add additional lineage here for, for that, they would probably require a pedestrian refuge in the middle of the lanes where you walk across one lane, you have a protected, curb-protected island in the middle, and then you're able to walk across the next lane. Those are the kinds of things that I've seen a bump out here because there's not an intersection on the other side, isn't necessarily intuitive.
Matt, from the center line of the track towards 75, how much of that is CSX right of way? I mean, give me a relationship between the bottom end of the bridge there.
Yeah, it's probably.
Cursor is now.
I think somewhere about where my cursor is, I would, it's 50.
Right, yeah, those utilities would likely be, be outside CSX.
Well, I can go up here and we know that CSX right of way is to about right, just on the edge of this tree garden. There's about a foot, foot and a half, maybe two feet into this is where the CSX right of way extends. So they own that tree and they own all these parking spots.
They, they can have the tree, it's gone.
As I was going to say, if they own the tree, how come we took it down? What about on the other side on the, on the veterans' wall over there? How far does that encroach on that side, you know, just while we're on the top?
Yeah, a couple of feet of the veterans' wall is, is in the right of way.
Well, I can't wait to have that conversation with them.
Oh, we're having it. We're having it.
So the flash, I want to kind of note that the flashing beacon, one will be approximately in this area. Another one will be facing the other way on the other side of the road, somewhere in this vicinity. And then we will also have a third one kind of warning that there is going to be a crossing a couple hundred feet up the road. So there is additional warnings that people are crossing the road here. We do understand the concern that going underneath the bridge.
I was going to say, anything in the pavement itself as far as lighting, lots of dots, things like that?
Not at this point, no. Again, I think those would come into play if, if we were to improve that intersection at its ultimate, you know, when we're, when we're deciding that project. Because the scope of it, the, the tap grant scope was, was particularly pedestrian and bike oriented. It wasn't necessarily roadway. And so we don't, we don't have the funds built into that to, to do a whole lot in the pavement. But again, if, if we're not seeing compliance with, with the flashing beacons, then certainly safety is the overriding issue. And so I'll always be open to, to additional means to, to improve safety there. Certainly, I think the, the beacons that are actuated do a lot better than, than the flags. And, and I know, you know, those light conditions are bad. Hopefully, the lights will cut through all of that as well. And, and, and that's kind of our pilot to see, is that enough or do we need to continue in this direction?
Matt, I had a quick question. Has it ever been discussed about creating steps on the other side of where the steps are now and creating another cross right where that cursor is now, crossing over to the women's club?
So, no, there, there hasn't. I think, you know, when we're trying to do something ADA-wise, another set of steps doesn't do anything for it. If, if, you know, maybe to, to your point, if that keeps people from having to go across to the street side and they just go right up the, right up the stairs and go across, there's certainly value in that. The, the impacts to, to what's going on there are probably not as, not as great when we talk about, that wouldn't go into the foundation. So we could consider approaching CSX and the historic preservation folks about something as, as simple as that.
Yeah, Pedro, I think that's a good idea to explore. It's like a separate project. I think you'd still want to do what we're doing with the pedestrian improvements there, you know, put in a little bit of, of protection refuge with the sidewalk to make everything more ADA compliant. But I, I, I think that that's a, a wise idea to at least to explore what would go into adding that as another, as another component of this, i.e. a separate, at least explore it as a possible separate project.
I, I just see it as you could have it stairs or you could have it as a ramp that would make it ADA compliant. But it, it highlights the intersection a little bit more and I think it would give drivers more cause to slow down as the intersection is not just the one straight roadway up by the, by the bridge.
Yeah, I don't know if a ramp is really going to help any because the, the bridge itself is not ADA compliant in, in all the other directions. It's, it's purely there for, for people who can, who can navigate it. And that's why we have to find means to get any people with, that aren't able to walk steps to other locations that have the proper ramps and grades that meet ADA requirements.
So CSX has no obligation to make their bridges or their walkways?
Well, no, that's the, that's, that's where the historic nature comes in. This bridge was built before ADA standards and it's a landmark. So it doesn't have to follow ADA standards explicitly. If, if that was a requirement on our downtown buildings, historic nonetheless would have to be retrofitted. And they would if they were being improved more than 50% of their value, but that's never been the case in, in these areas.
And I think that's why, Pedro, it would be best in this regard to, if we want to explore adding the steps there, which I, I think just on its own surface is a very viable option. Of course, you know, there's a lot of layers of that and folks we'd have to talk to, but it, it, if it were to happen, it could work well in conjunction with the, with the PED safety project here. And so that you would give most people that would be able to navigate that bridge could then just walk down those steps and continue onto the sidewalk. But then you'd also have the, the component there with the hot beacons and then the, the curve with sidewalk as well for folks that would need, need that too.
So I just want to make sure I understand what Commissioner Mori was saying. So as you're walking down the bridge, if you come down to the end of the bridge, you could make a T and take stairs to the right or to the left, depending on which direction you wanted to go in. Is that correct?
That's correct. And then create another crosswalk essentially closer to where the women's club is.
No, I wouldn't, you wouldn't put crosswalks in. As there's adding too much, I don't think DOT is going to go for that because there's not an intersection. It's not intuitive. The, the, the single crosswalk would, would still be the, the direct means, but all those pedestrians that are able to access the stairs and want to go over the, the bridge anyway wouldn't have to walk along the, the, the narrower section of the sidewalk. And that's, that's really where the value would be.
Well, you could also, let's say, you know, I could see kids wanting to go up and down the stairs as opposed to doing the sidewalk.
Yeah, no, I mean, that's, that certainly does have merit in its own right. And, and we can, we can follow up both in terms of either moving the side, the, the steps from the one side a little further back to maybe create some more space or putting stairs on both sides to at least reduce the, the volume of pedestrians that have to use the narrower passage.
I mean, I think, I, I think I really would like to see this project kind of get off the ground, but I think if we can explore, explore that option, I think that's a, a great suggestion from Commissioner Mori.
It's a great suggestion. And, and so I, I think we can explore that and move forward. I would just encourage us to make that a separate project just so it doesn't encumber what we're doing now. Cause you, you, you all know, you know, once you approach CSX, DOT, everybody that would have to be aligned with this, you just don't know how long, what, what issues you'll run into. So tying that into what we're trying to accomplish here, first of all, I think would just potentially take that much longer than it's already taking. So I guess to, to nicely put it, but I think if we can explore that separately, that's a fantastic idea and I think we'd be willing to do that.
Yeah, I, I agree with you, Jeff. You know, I, I think sometimes to try to get through the bureaucracy of having to deal with all these different entities to get that approval. I think we need to, to move forward, but then really kind of explore that because I really like that option. I think it would help solve a lot.
We will go down that rabbit hole.
Look at any other questions?
I think that wraps up most of the presentation. Just more combination of the impact of the structural was, is further discussed. And would require structural design and detailed construction efforts. So staff recommends this should be proposed outside of the phase one improvements. Just to, to avoid further delays to currently four-year delay of the existing project.
And then is it on the next slide that talks about the relocation and steps?
No, that was the previous slide. We, we, that was it right there. We had, I discussed that.
Okay.
Well, it was a little earlier.
Okay.
Just questions. I think we had a lot of questions, but if you have more, happy to answer them.
Hey, Matt.
Sir.
You're up again.
Hopefully not. Good job.
I thought we were done.
Where are we at, Melody? Have we, we covered all our bases?
Oh, I was just saying you're the closer.
No, I think that's, that's everything we wanted to bring forward to y'all today. Very helpful for us. And, and again, we doing in our work session, I think, provided a lot better format for, for back and forth. And then, but we will bring, bring back more items to the, to the regular agenda once we are, we're ready with it.
Jeff, you're on mute.
Oh, so you covered everything you want to cover with NC 16 and 75?
Yeah, that was just the piece about CSX is not going to allow us to encroach with any improvements to the lineage at all. So we'll, we'll take that piece of information and, and run in a different direction.
Just, just a comment on that. And I know when you presented that information to us the first time, you talked, they talked about putting barriers on self, on self in front of like permissions and I, I think that would really ruin historic character and childhood downtown. It's going to have to be something decorative or different and not just something that you would see on a highway.
Right. And, and from my standpoint, I would, I would be thinking something more railroad timber, like something wooden, but substantial. And, and kind of in a, in a finish that harkens to the, to the pedestrian bridge and not a galvanized format. If that's the direction we, we look like we need to go in. Again, we will, we will vet that much more thoroughly as we bring that project forward.
Is there something that you could throw back into history back in the days when they had like the horse carriages or something, that, something historic?
Absolutely. Absolutely. We, we've, we've not really begun to do any research in that regard. Again, we've, we've kind of got to get what's on our plate off. And when we talk about tap, that, that's easier said than done. But yeah, that's, that's on the horizon to be able to, to move forward because we know that intersection in general is, is, is high on the priority list.
Right. Well, I just, I just wanted to express that because as you go into talks and you have meetings and partnerships and planning sessions, that, that's something I think that needs to be put in upfront.
Yeah, and, and I'm all about, you know, being creative and being open to all, all kinds of options. I know this is not the only spot that this occurs. So someone out there has probably already thought of it. We just got to track it down and propose it and, and, and do it in a way that, that matches with, with Waxaw. And, and I think all of us are, are well in tune with what we would expect to have and, and what we wouldn't want to have.
Yeah, maybe somebody's going to watch this meeting though. They'll be giving us a call.
Right.
Alright, if there are no further questions or comments on this, see any hands? I don't see anybody out there. I think we're going to move to adjourn. So we will adjourn. Don't even.
Thank you.
Alright, thank you, everybody. We'll see most of you, if not all of you, on the next call.